Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Present.
Amy Costa. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Pam Haines.
Here.
Jennifer Perry. And Bill Rawlings.
Present.
President Aguinaldo, we have quorum.
Thank you very much, Terry. And now we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Vice President Rawlings, will you lead us in the pledge?
Please stand if you're able, face the flag. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Vice President Rawlings. We have the agenda in front of us. Is there any discussion from board members as to the order of the agenda? All right, hearing none, we will jump into my first president's report. I'm hearing applause, maybe it's just stolen in my head. I'd like to express gratitude for the very warm welcome that we've received from the community and the Calbright family. We are three weeks into the role and have already been put to work, delightfully so, and we look forward to delving deeper into the months and years ahead. Recently, Vice President Rawlings and I had the honor of virtually meeting with Calbright faculty and staff, where we shared a few thoughts on the path forward, in addition to sharing a few recipes. The synthesis is this: Calbright's timeless mission is to meet and exceed the needs of the moment, and irrespective of what is in the national news, including costs of tuition, workforce preparedness, AI and innovation, we are guided by the need to do right by our students. And I'm happy to see that guided light, guiding light reflected in the agenda today. So with that, I'll pass it to President Menon.
Thank you. And for the first time, President Aguinaldo and Vice President Rawlings and members of the Calbright College Board of Trustees Executive Committee. Similarly, it is a pleasure to welcome you both into the new leadership positions that you're holding. I'm just thrilled to continue working with you in this new capacity in our efforts to contribute to the shared mission of driving success for adult learners across the state. As we welcome new leadership, I also wanted to take a moment to extend my heartfelt gratitude to former President Amy Costa for her exceptional leadership and her dedication to advancing Calbright's mission. Amy's unwavering commitment to advancing equitable and educational opportunities for all students and also fostering an inclusive and innovative learning environment has made such a lasting impact and that one that will keep us going strong on the path that we have forward. So before we dive into today's meeting, I did want to share a few words of reflection as our country experiences a turning point. I shared this with the Calbright team already, but as we embark on another year of serving work for each Californian, what's imperative to remember is that our work has a real and lasting impact, not only on our students, but on our economy. We are an educational institution that is also a workforce engine. And nothing about that changes now. Regardless of current events, our mission and values remain the same. We're committed to increasing economic mobility and closing equity gaps for working adults in our communities who lack easy access to traditional forms of higher education. And with that, we're going to keep our focus on the learners who need us and our efforts directed towards enhancing our online, flexible, affordable, skills-based programs to provide tangible economic value for working adults and hiring managers. As Vice President Rawlings so aptly reminded the team last week at our all-staff meeting, students are actually the ones guiding us to where we want to and need to be. In fact, just this morning, I had the opportunity to speak to the Board of Rural County Representatives of California, speaking with leaders from 40 out of the state's 58 counties, highlighting Calbright's role in supporting adult learners in rural regions and connecting with county representatives to understand how we can best drive economic value for their communities. Our students reflect the diverse needs of communities across California, and the most important part of this is that we're listening. As we approach the end of the year, it's really remarkable to consider how far we've come. We started off 2024 with a new strategic vision outlining a roadmap for Calbright's operations and goals over the next four years, a vision focused on driving student outcomes through deeper collaboration and optimizing the student experience, while also sustainably advancing a strong model for skills-based education that is valued by employers and prioritizes the needs of current and prospective students. We continued the year by releasing statewide Public Sector Labor Market Impact Report. Guided by this report, Calbright created new opportunities, like our California Workforce Accelerator, to train future-ready workers and bring all corners of our communities off the sidelines of our economy and into good jobs. A few other noteworthy highlights of 2024 and on our highlight reel include awarding over 1,000 certificates, launching two public programs, Project Management Network Technology, preparing to launch our Human Resources Learning and Development Program, and updating many others to align with regularly changing industry standards. And also, we're driving out workforce outcomes for our learners by creating two new strong workforce partnerships that will expand economic opportunities for Calbright learners alongside these other successes. By all accounts, we've found our stride and we're swiftly quickening our pace. Throughout this year, the Board of Trustees has been in our corner. And as we close in on this season of gratitude, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate your leadership, your guidance, your grace, and your dedication to Calbright and our mission. I'd also like to thank Calbright's leadership team, staff, and faculty who supported our work in turning a new chapter in Calbright's story. As we look ahead to 2025, we're going to continue to grow our programmatic offering and our career readiness opportunities. We'll evaluate our student support endeavors and optimize them so that the largest number of Calbright students can benefit, because student success has always been central in Calbright's number-one priority. But we're now in a position with a substantial student body and Calbright team to double down on this focus and our goal for more students to complete their programs and to do so in a timeframe that meets their needs and goals and to carry that success into the labor market. Many of these initiatives are already in place and are already seeing progress, but we have to move with purpose and an eye towards long-term sustainability as we advance our strategic vision and expand the reach and impact of our work. I look forward to sharing these outcomes with the board in the months ahead. Until the new year, I hope you have a wonderful holiday season and a happy and healthy new year. Thank you again to President Aguinaldo. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much, President Menon. The next section of our agenda is the closed session conference with our legal counsel. Is there any public comment on the closed session items?
There is no public comment, President Aguinaldo.
Very much, Terry. We expect to return from closed session in approximately 15 minutes. See you then. The board has conclusion and there is nothing to report. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or separate vote? Let's take a vote then on the consent agenda. Any public comment first?
There was no public comment, President Aguinaldo.
Very much, Terry. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Vice President Rawlings.
Second it. Haines.
Thank you, Member Haines. May I have the roll call?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Leaching carries, President Aguinaldo.
Very much, Terry. We are swiftly moving through our agenda and now are in the action section. The first action item is item 4.1, to approve a professional services agreement with Educred Services, and that's presented by Dr. McCarty.
Hello, President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, and members of the board. I am Shannon McCarty, Vice President of Learning and Instruction. And today I'm seeking board approval for a professional service agreement with Educred Services, where accreditation services commencing on January 1st, 2025, with a three-year term and a total not-to-exceed amount of $225,000. Calbright College remains deeply committed to continuous improvement as we prepare for the 2026 DEIC accreditation. As you know, accreditation is essential to ensuring institutional integrity, quality, and accountability, benefiting both students and the institution. Given the unique nature of Calbright's complement-based education model and direct assessment approach, we have partnered with Educred Services since 2020. Their specialized expertise has been beneficial in guiding us through the initial accreditation process. We propose continuing this partnership through a new three-year agreement, starting January 1, 2025, to support the 2026 renewal process and accreditation requirement. This includes navigating new accreditation standards and ensuring a seamless process aligned with our mission. As previously mentioned, I'm here seeking approval to extend a professional service agreement with Educred for accreditation services commencing on January 1, for a three-year term and not-to-exceed amount of $225,000.
Dr. McCarty, any discussion from the board?
So I do have just a generic question. So usually accreditation is longer than... Is there a reason why it's in 2026? Is it because this is a new institution and therefore needs to have a track record? And so they're sort of coming back and checking things out?
Correct. And I think we anticipate, so initial accreditation reflected the facts on the ground at the time. The process of renewing accreditation, we think it's likely to be a longer window until the next time we get to renew accreditation again. So there might be some specifics on the timeframes that Dr. McCarty can illuminate, but that's my understanding.
So, good to know. So this is not the same accrediting body that the other community colleges? So I know that there's that distinction, but is there a track record relative to those who are using this accreditation process? Is it a five-year window?
Correct. For a DEAC specifically, the first time after the first accreditation, they give a three-year term. And then after that second accreditation, you have up to five years.
Okay.
Like an HLC or WASP, that could be 10. So the most we would get would be up to five.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other trustee discussion? Let's ask for public comment at this time, Terry.
There is no public comment, President Aguinaldo.
Very much, Terry. I'll take a motion.
Haines will move the item.
Thank you, Member. Thank you, Member Epstein. Terry, if you can call the roll.
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Leaching carries, President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, Terry. Let's move now to item 4.2, which is to ratify support expenditures and authorize our president and CEO to approve future 2024, 2025 fiscal year support expenditures. And I'll turn it over to our Executive Director of Finance, Amber Borth.
Hello, good morning. Good morning, President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, Calbright College President and CEO Menon, Board of Trustees, and Calbright community. I am Amber Borth, Controller, Executive Director of Finance, and I'm here to present the request for board ratification for stated expenditures from July through November 2024 and to authorize Calbright's president and CEO or designee to approve future 24, 25 fiscal year support expenditures for stated vendors in an amount not to exceed $8.6 million, consistent with the budget approved by the Board of Trustees Executive Committee at its August 2024 meeting. Calbright has an ongoing need for operational support agreements. The stated expenditures listed in Exhibit A were included in the adopted budget and have met bid requirements through public contract code. Per Board Policy 6330, the Board of Trustees must approve any expenditure above $100,000. Exhibit A contains an itemized list of routine or maintenance support agreements and equipment vendors that exceed the annual policy limit of $100,000. Finance gathered this information from financial reports to present this in one action. Invoices associated with these services and equipments needs occur at various times throughout the year. To maximize efficiency and continuity of services, staff requests the Board of Trustees delegate approval for such purchases and invoice payments to the president and CEO. One last note, as you will note in Exhibit A, it is all-encompassing. It means that we've included vendors that the Board of Trustees has previously approved as exceeding amounts over $100,000. The intent of including all vendors here is to include all budgeted items in one exhibit. It is the intent of finance to bring this agenda item forward annually at its adopted budget. Thank you for your consideration.
I have a question.
I do too.
Well, my question is going to be of you.
Oh.
Because I remember when we adopted the $100,000 approval requirement in our procedures, there was kind of a little bit of a, there was a discussion about it. It was very explicitly made. And so I was wondering, Member Haines, if it's typical for a community college district to give this kind of authorization to the staff in one fell swoop, even if it exceeds the amount that's in their procedures?
So, so... We don't, we don't get, we don't, we don't tend to, I'll just speak to what I do know, to get like things that come before us for $100,000 or $200,000. And so there is some discretion, and sometimes boards will make clear that, you know, something that's $500,000 or $450,000, that needs to come before the board for approval. But we don't usually get contracts that. That's, that's the discretion of the college.
Could I highlight one thing, which is to Amber's point, this is, these are authorizing expenditures?
Yeah.
We still, this doesn't circumvent any process associated with entering into agreements or entering into contracts, which is still all subject to a set of board rules. This is, these are a lot of expenditures that are ongoing and operational pursuant to a contract that we have established. So this is just the expenditure side under the contract.
Do the board procedures that we adopted, did that address just the contracting part or the expenditure part?
I'm going to phone a friend on the council side.
Yes, the, the board policy regarding delegation of authority to the president and CEO relates to the contracting, the ability to enter into contracts without board approval. Anything over $100,000 needs board ratification. Under $100,000 can be entered into by the president and CEO, subject to just reporting out to the board.
So it doesn't affect the expenditure of the, of the funds under the contract?
Right. So generally, the expenditures are tied to the contract. The contract is what authorizes the expenditure. And so in some cases, we have a contract in general, which is approved by the board, but the expenditures are coming in piecemeal and without the express authority of the board to allow the president and CEO to sign off, to incur those expenditures, short of bringing those back to the board. Then again, it would have to come back to the board, even though the board has approved the contract. And in some cases, the budgetary function as well, the budgetary limit.
So, this is, this is Pam Haines. So, what is it, is it part of our regs as a board that even though you have approved a contract with an amount in the contract, that, so I'm missing something. You, once you sort of have to give them the money, you have to come back to us again?
A good example is the marketing budget. We've had to do that with.
So why? I mean, is it, have we set up regulations like that?
No, it's a little bit of, I mean, folks should correct me. It feels like it was a little bit of operational inefficiency. And so Amber's point is, on a regular basis now, at the time that the board adopts the budget, we will do this going forward. And so what is, what you're seeing reflected here?
So what we're seeing an 8.5...
Six months, yeah.
Million is because you're getting, you're trying to give us, we're going to give you approval to do that.
To make these expenditures.
And then in the future, you will not be accruing in a way that you have to come back with another 8.5 million?
At the end of this fiscal year, in preparation for the adoption of the new budget, we will bring the expenditure request and authority at the same time of the budget. So this is our first time kind of consolidating the expenditure of us in this way.
Okay.
And now I think we do have more predictability over what expenses, like the ones you find on this list that are going to be ongoing on a regular basis. And so I think this, this is like, this is how the category of expenditures is kind of contained. You can see like the types of expenditures we're talking about are a lot of the base technologies that we use, the marketing and advertising spend, the more structural parts of our operations.
Okay, I understand that now, because most Board of Trustees don't see this. But because it's ongoing, there's a reason why we don't see it. Okay.
So, at the end of all of our board agendas, there's usually a list of contracts or expenditures that were made pursuant to contracts. And that is basically, this is like the 12-month version of that.
Yeah, this one is six months through the end of the fiscal year.
Six months, okay.
And next year, we'll do it for a whole year.
Right. And you don't need our approval. You just report that as an expenditure.
We've been reporting that out, yeah.
Yeah.
So here we're.
So why do you need approval if you were expending the money without our approval all along?
This is either a Wanda question or a...
Yeah.
Amber question.
Yeah, if I can, if I'm understanding the question correctly, again, I think it's the alignment between the delegated authority and the amount of the expenditure. So if the entire contract, let's say, is for $500,000, that would be a board. That contract would be presented to the board for approval.
Actually, the ad spend is a good example, I think, maybe, Wanda, like the... So that was a case in which during a given period, the expenditure would exceed the authority that I have for expenditure, that the president and CEO has been delegated to have for expenditure. And that's why we kept coming to the board, almost close to the line of when we needed the actual authorization of the expenditure in order to seek approval of that. So it was close to disrupting, for example, our work on ad spend. And so there were a few items like that that did come to the board for action on the expenditure side of things that exceeded my authority so that the colleges essentially didn't have the authority to expend. And here, again, for operational efficiency, the authorized expenditures are consolidated in a way that doesn't have us catching up and trying to get ahead of an expenditure like something like ad spend.
All right, so I guess I'm still a little bit confused. So in, so in the future, we will not get this. Will we get any facsimile of that? Those would be new contracts that will then begin to accrue if we, if they become every day or every ongoing expenses?
So the pre-authorization on expenditures will be clearly delineated for the board and we'll do it at the time that the budget is adopted. So if we carry out the example like ad spend, you'll see that reflected in both the amount that the board is approving under the budget and for the expenditure authority to expend that amount over the course of the budget year.
Okay. All right.
I'm still, I'm having trouble understanding why you need our approval for this. And also, like, I recognize a lot of these vendors from the monthly reports that we get. One that I don't, I guess, and we do get Google Ads every month, I guess. I guess I'm not sure why, if we've approved the contract.
And the contract.
And you report them monthly anyhow. Why does the board have to take this action?
I think it's, okay, you can answer, but I think it's over an abundance of caution. Because it is, it is generally, and it, and because when you add all these up, it's $0.5 million. And just see, just sort of seeing that, I mean, so I get that piece of it, but it is an internal process that hopefully, you know, I, I believe in fiscal. I mean, part of the, part of the role of the board is for this fiscal transparency and accountability. So I get that, that part of it, because nobody wants to be caught not paying attention to expenditures. But there is sort of the work that staff has to do to get this back to us on things that we think that we've already approved. And, and, you know, it's like, well, why is this coming with again? So, the part that needs to be ironed out.
I think that's why the hope is that we do it once, at the time when you're looking at and approving the budget. And then we can still provide informational reports on a, on a regular basis on where we are in the process. And the quarterlies provide another opportunity for us to do that and highlight for the board. But we will, starting next fiscal year, we'll use this routine habit of it.
All right. Fair enough.
Or did you want to, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I did, if it's okay, and I apologize for interrupting. So on this list, we have a list of vendors that we have solicited either through RFP or through other procurement eligible, so that is eligible through procurement, through ed code, through college buys, or for informal bidding. But not all of these vendors have gone to the board via a contract. We have gone to the board via purchase order. And so the intent here is to align all of the, the operational vendors that could exceed or do exceed $100,000 to ask the board for that delegation of authority to the president and CEO, should we exceed the $100,000 as per the adopted budget. And that's why we want to bring that annually with the adopted budget. That's the budgetary plan. And so we're identifying those vendors that might not come to the board specifically through a contract, but they might come through a purchase order as a ratification.
So, so that means that, you know, contracts that exceed $100,000 or will exceed $100,000 in expenditures in a year never come to the board as a separate item?
No, you were describing, I think, Amber, you were describing like contracts that we leverage through college buys or central agreements like that. We don't bring those contracts to the board because they're held by the college-wise program, for example, that all the different colleges utilize and leverage. So the ones that we enter into on behalf of the college directly like that, those all come to the board. And, and those are all governed by the procurement, board policies and administrative procedures.
I guess what I'm trying to get at, I guess, is that, you know, fiscal management is one of the key responsibilities of a board. And we adopted a policy that says that every contract over $100,000 has to be approved by the board. And I, I wouldn't want to delegate, you know, a half a million dollar contract to just be included in a list without ever having gone through the process of being reviewed by the board. Are we safe on that?
I, yes, 100%, because this does not change anything about the board policy on approval of contracts or entering into those contracts. So those are still governed by the same rules and principles and procedural requirements that we have in place. The ones that are, the payments that are not as visible are the contracts leveraged through something like the college buys. A lot of that could be like the CWA stuff is something that we leverage through college buys on, you know, devices and stuff is mostly that contract.
Okay.
Vice President Rawlings.
So just to clarify a little bit and kind of going back to a couple of points Tom has, has made here. So if I, I think about prior board agendas where we would have, you know, contracts and expenditures approved by the power delegated to the board president, this addresses, I kind of captures all of that and brings it to the full board rather than having it, the president necessarily deal with those one-off as they're popping up. And then if we are, then if that, if that's the case, then at the beginning of the fiscal year, when we approve the budget and then we approve the delegation of the expenditures along with the contracts and everything else that goes along with it, then through this action, we're essentially just delegating the execution of the contracts to the president after our approval has already been given. Is that right? Okay.
Asking a question for my clarification, do you need the expenditure to be approved before you enter into the contracting process?
If the expenditure exceeds $100,000, we need the contract and we need board approval. So in some of the cases, some of these vendors, board approval, multiple years. And so the contract was board-approved. We have an ongoing operational relationship.
We have an ongoing operational relationship with the vendor. And so it's potential for that expense to exceed $100,000 this year or over multiple years. And so in our conversation finance with legal, we determined this was the best way in which we could provide the data to the board. One exhibit that is in alignment with our budget and our operational plan for the year.
Then they keep coming back. Okay.
If you have further question clarification to the point you made. If we enter into agreement with a vendor, uh, and the initial expenditure may not exceed $100,000, we're okay to move forward. But if at the time that we enter into the agreement with the vendor and we anticipate that the expenditure will eventually exceed $100,000, then we still should have had that brought back to the board. So even in actuality, just our, uh, on the staff side, uh, your operational expectation that it will creates the burden that you bring it to the board. Is that right?
Other discussions from the, the Board of Trustees? Okay. Public comment, Terry.
There is no public comment, President Aguinaldo.
Very much, Terry. May I have a motion?
Haynes will move approval.
Thank you, trustee Haynes.
I'll second Rawlings.
Vice President Rawlings, Terry may have a roll call.
Heldegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Rob Epstein.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Aguinaldo.
Very much, Terry. We're moving on to item 4.3 in our action agenda to adopt Assembly Bill 1855 Resolution, authorizing remote and teleconference meeting for the associated students of Calbright Colleges. And with that, I'll pass it to Vice President of Student Services and Success, Don Orth.
Thank you. Good morning, President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawlings and members of the board. I'm Don Orth, Vice President of Student Services and Success. I'm here to present on agenda item 4.3, seeking your approval and adoption of Resolution number 202401, which would authorize remote teleconferencing meetings for the associated students of Calbright College. As little background, AB 1855 was authored by Assembly Member Dr. Joaquin Arambula and signed into law by Governor Newsom this past fall. Effective January 1st, 2025, this law will provide for the following. It authorizes a California Community College Student Body Association or other specified student-run community college organization to use similar alternative teleconferencing provisions related to notice, agenda and public participation as prescribed, if, among other requirements, the Board of Trustees of the Community College District has adopted an authorizing resolution and two-thirds of an eligible legislative body votes to use the alternative teleconferencing provisions. As a statewide online community college with an engaged student body eager to participate in student government, we found that Open Meeting Act posting and location requirements challenging for some of our students, ultimately preventing their participation. Specifically, posting an agenda at each attending member's location posed, posed a risk for some students. Under this new law, our student body can actively hold meetings free of these initial restraints. We'd like to personally thank Assembly Member Arambula for authorizing this, uh, for authoring this legislation. Governor Newsom for signing it into law. Stephanie Goldman, Associate Director of the Student Senate for California Community Colleges, who spearheaded this important work. And our Calbright Government Relations colleagues who worked with Ms. Goldman and the state legislature advocating for this legislation. At this time, I'd like to ask the Board of Trustees to approve and adopt Resolution 202401, authorizing remote teleconference meetings for the associate students of Calbright College in accordance with Assembly Bill 1855. And I, and I'm also happy, of course, to answer any questions related to this item.
Thank you, Vice President Orth. Any trustee discussion? Seeing none, any public comments?
There is no public comment, President Aguinaldo.
You very much, Terry.
Well, oh. If it's okay, I'd just like to say one thing, which is, um, one, I think we're tremendously grateful to our government relations team and the statewide student senate for really helping enable this opportunity for Calbright learners, Calbright student government to more actively participate in ways that kind of feel are, are connected to our ethos, are about meeting them where they are and can, and taking great consideration for their efforts. So I, I did just want to congratulate the team and the affiliated students on this really important victory. This is, this was not a small lift and a, a whole team of, of folks and leadership in the assembly to get this done.
Incredible partnership to get, um, to get this done and it's absolutely important and imperative for us to have the students involved in, um, what we're doing here at the college. So thank you very much for the entire team as well. Um, any public comments? Did I already ask for public comment? I did. I'm looking for a motion.
Move it.
I'll do a second.
Okay. Thank you, Vice President Rawlings and trustee Epstein. Um, Terry may have a roll call, please.
Heldegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Rob Epstein.
Hi.
I am here.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, Terry. We are moving to the first reading, section, I, um, item 5.1, which is the first reading of our revised board policy. I will pass it to our legal counsel, Wanda Daniel.
Good morning, President Aguinaldo of the Executive. Item before you.
Running out.
Keeps going off. Can you hear me now?
There you go.
The item before you, um, for consideration is a proposed revision to Board Policy 20, I'm sorry, 22, 20.1 regarding the executive committee. And this is for a first reading, uh, for reviewing discussion regarding a proposed revision to reduce the size of the commit, the executive committee from seven to five. This change is requested by board leadership. Um, and again, this is for, um, your consideration, your discussion today. And, um, based on, um, your desire to move forward, the item will come back before you, the full board in January for discussion and adoption. I'm happy to ask you to answer any questions.
I feel like I'm attending my own execution here. Yeah, yeah. I was one of the instigators behind this and I support it.
So, um, I guess my question is, um, does, does the, is the five representative of the total Board of Trustees remembering that we're an ex, I realize that we're, this is an executive committee, but there have been times when we've gotten close to not having quorum with seven. Would five make that more difficult? Or maybe it's less difficult?
I think it depends on perspective. I think if it was difficult to get seven, it may be easier to get a quorum with five.
Depending on where they're located.
Um, and with the, the telecommute, um, teleconferencing, that should be easier to assemble a quorum.
Thank you. And I have a subsequent question, which is this. We, um, the Board of Trustees is what, 18 members? And, um, and so part of the, part of the, part of the seven was a, a, a broad and diverse group of folks. It included, um, you know, we look to have a faculty voice. We look to have, uh, just a, a broad spectrum. In the narrowing of the five, that narrows also the ability to have that kind of diversity.
I might offer a additional opinion if it's helpful as a reference to this consideration. Uh, one of the things I will say is it felt especially important given the volume of work in setting up the college that was necessary. And you notice that if you look at our early agendas as an executive committee about the, the, the type of work that was handled primarily by the executive committee. So where we kind of are now in terms of our development as an organization, and I do think that we are at a stage where a lot more of the content and subject of meetings tends to be around routine board action. And, uh, you know, that level of efficiency has become an important part of how we conduct and operate the business. And, um, I think we've been very diligent about trying to use the full board meetings and the full representation of the board. Especially around key parts of advancing, parts of our strategic vision and other things that really benefit from having the input of the full board. And this allows us to kind of meet a balance of meeting the operational transactions that the board needs to conduct for an operating college with the opportunity that we still have with the full board to engage all participants carrying a variety of recommendations, uh, forward to shape and inform the most important parts of our work.
Okay. And I, and I apologize because I didn't read this very carefully before I came. So the, and the other piece of that, um, that, um, the, the, the process was to include the president of the board and I think the vice president of the board. Is that still there? So it would be those two and then three others.
That's correct, that provision, um, that, excuse me, specifies the president and the vice president shall be two members. And the remaining members shall be designated by majority vote of the Board of Trustees that remains.
Okay. Okay.
I just want to emphasize what Ajita said. I, I think it's really important that the, the really significant items still come to the full board and that the executive committee items more of the routine occasionally, you know, you'll have to put in something important in front of the but I do think it's, it's important that the full board gets the way in. And the other positive aspect is Terry's going to save so much money on lunch.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to underscore Tom's point because if we have a committee, executive committee of seven, that means our quorum is four. If we have an executive committee of five, our quorum is three. And that executive committee would encounter agenda items like 4.2, which was a subject of a lot of discussion just now. So I think we have to be just really mindful of the timing on certain things and making sure that we bring the most appropriate items for full board discussion. Um, things may not be appropriate. Even though it, it passes muster with our policy for just three people to look at certain items. So again, team, this is a first reading. I think there's a, a lot of discussion that we could still have around this. But thank you very much for the discussion on the first reading. I don't want to cut the discussion off though. Is there any other trustee discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to pass it to Terry for any public comment.
There is no public comment, President Aguinaldo.
Thank you, Terry. And because this is not an action item, we don't need a vote. So let's move on to the next section of our agenda, information and reports. Item 6.1 is the fiscal quarter year 2025 budget update. I will pass it off again to our Controller, Executive Director of Finance, Amber Borth.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to say again, good morning, Board President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, Calbright College CEO and President Menon, Board of Trustees and Calbright Community. I am Amber Borth, Controller, excuse me, Directive, Executive Director of Finance. And I'm here to present the first quarter 2025 budget update and current spend. If we could move to slide two, please. Today's presentation will review Calbright's budget, our fiscal year 2024, actuels, our quarter one, current year update, as well as our planned next steps for the future. Slide three, we're going to move into our budget overview. Slide four. Thank you. The Calbright 2024 budget was adopted in August and remains unchanged. The budget advances our notable progress in recent years and allocates resources to meet our growing enrollment, expanded program offerings and keeps our student center design. Slide five. Now that our 2324 books are closed, we can review the 2024 actual results. These are our unaudited actuels. Moving into slide six. The data that you're looking at here includes our budget and actuals information for last fiscal year, both funds combined. Our general fund began with $74.9 million balance and we closed with a $58.5 million balance. In other words, we spent approximately $34.5 million during the 2324 fiscal year. Majority of our expenditures were seen in staffing costs at 67.5% of our overall expense. The next highest category of expense was our services and other operating expenditures at 30% of total expenditures. This category includes contracts such as our tools competition, our partnership with UCI, T-Mobile and other vendors related to student and staff devices, software implementation and marketing expenditures. Overall, we did spend less than anticipated at our adopted budget. However, as in past years, this simply is a timing difference in implementation of assumptions made when the budget was adopted back in August 2023. Overall, we closed the books with a slightly lower ending fund balance than we projected at quarter four of last fiscal year. Seven, it's time to transition our first quarter financial results. Our slide. We're on pace with our quarter one encumbrances and expenditures coming in at 29% of the adopted budget. Migration to Canvas did slow student enrollment down during our first quarter. However, we ended with 4,395 students at the end of September. In our first quarter, we launched data analysis and updated cybersecurity program in Canvas. We experienced steady growth in our data analysis program, leading to over 1,200 students currently enrolled. Continued enrollment growth will lead to higher expenditures in future quarters as budgeted. Slide nine. The data provided represents our unrestricted fund budget and actuels with $4 million of our $20 million budget spent or 21% of our total budget spent at quarter one. Thank you. Next slide, please. Thank you. This slide includes data for our restricted fund budget and actuels with 4.9 million of our $49 million budget spent or 10% of our total budget spent at quarter one and 22% of the budget encumbered for a total encumbered or spent rate of 32%. Moving to slide 11. When we review now our combined data, we see that we have spent $9.2 million of our $69, $69 million budget with 75% spent on staffing costs and 22% spent on services and other operating expenditures. Just like last fiscal year, the services in this category include student and staff devices, technology and software, agreements with support vendors and other student support services. Again, when we add our encumbrances to our spent amount at quarter one, we have roughly 71% of the budget remaining in this fiscal year. We continue to focus on expanding our program offerings, including our recent launches as mentioned by President Menon in her opening remarks. In other words, we are on pace at quarter one with our projected totals. If we can move to slide 12, please. We're transitioning now to next steps. Slide 13. Thank you. Uh, later on in the agenda item, our auditor CWDL will provide the board with an audited financial statements for 2324. Finance will continue to provide the board with quarterly reports and updates throughout this fiscal year. As I mentioned earlier, the takeaway at quarter one is we are tracking with budget and we are prepared to continue to grow in enrollment and staffing expenditures as planned. Any questions or comments regarding the Q1 update?
I have questions.
Terry, if you wouldn't mind taking down the shared slide so I could see the, thank you very much. Um, trustee Epstein.
Uh, yeah, I have a few. Um, looking at the 2324 budget, I see that the budget for, adopted budget for academic salaries with 7.7 million. We ended up spending 1.7 million. Curious about, I would like to hear an explanation of that, what that means and what we're doing in the future.
I'm going to repeat the question to make sure I understand. We're looking at our current year budget for academic salaries at
2324 budget for academic salaries, we adopted a budget of 7.7 million and we ended up spending 1.7 million. So there was 6 million unspent and I'm just curious how that happened and what it means.
Okay, yeah, so when we adopted the budget last fiscal year, it was with the intent that we were going to hire, I believe it was 23, if not more adjunct instructors. And the bulk of those instructors were hired at almost the December or the midpoint of the fiscal year. And so that was that timing alignment that I was talking about earlier when we adopt the budget. It's with certain assumptions and then due to timing, we ended up hiring the bulk of those adjunct instructors, I believe in December or later. So it was a timing issue.
Yeah, it seems like it should be, it should be more than just timing. Did we not hire?
The hiring is contingent, as we'll say, on the academic salary side of both program approval when launches and also the, the size of the enrollment increases and flow. And so, you know, six months of salaries has a lot to do with that timing of that calendar. Last fiscal year, some of the things we experienced is were significant delays on the program approval side coming from both the statewide system office as well as the next stages of accreditation approval that are required can launch now that we're post accreditation and the way that we typically anticipate launching post-program approvals is, is especially for new programs is smaller cohort and then expanding quite significantly in terms of the scale of it. So the timing differential, I think, just has a lot to do with when the launches hit and then additionally, when we can project the associated enrollment increases with the scaling of those programs. So we, you know, I would say this year we have a tight, the other thing is we were migrating learning management systems last year as well. I think this year's budget, Amber, can correct me, but I think we have taken a lot of consideration as to when some of those things have, when some of those hires are most likely to take place on those areas of planning that are within our control, things like program approval obviously are not in our control to get closer to an understanding between budgeted and actual based on our anticipation of when the hiring is likely to occur. And then we also think about obviously those costs, not just for that fiscal year, but
Ongoing ones, yeah.
So then my next question is about the 2025 restricted funds. There's a, a, a large number for academic salaries in, in restricted funds. And so I'm wondering, once we've expended the restricted funds, how do we fund to maintain that level of academic salary expenditure?
Yeah, I think everything about that phase of the college assumes a transition to a reliable funding stream that reflects the size of enrollment that we're going to sustain over time. So we built the model here that is asset position for sale. And what we're thinking to do next will be to make sure that our institution and our students get an equitable fair of per-student revenue coming into the college, either under the current formula and or augmented in ways that are needed to better support and align the way that institutions are funded on a per-student basis relative to our model, asynchronous, et cetera.
Okay, so that may help explain my next question, which was about, you know, our reserve is, is 6%, which I know is above the 5% minimum, but it's pretty close to the 5%. And so again, this is a matter of a future financial model of
I think so. And I think, I mean, reserves seem like they are a tricky thing in the public sector. And so I think we'll welcome the board's advice on how to think about ensuring reserves reflect a level of support and stability for the organization, but also don't become a target point of vulnerability for institutional resources, especially during technical I think that's an important balance for us to arrive at as an institution with guidance from the governing board.
My last question is just on, on the capital outlay. I, I know, I noticed in the audit, they talked about the office space plan and I was curious. You know, the capital outlay is pretty high and, and how mu- how much of that is, is for office space? And how much of that is for other things?
Well, I'll let Amber speak, speak to the technical aspects of the line item, but we do include in that, in that line item technology infrastructure that is needed uniquely for our online institution in addition to physical presence space in Sacramento and then in targeted other parts of the state. So it, it holds share for both of those things in the line item in terms of what's included there. Proportionately, if you want to know more, Amber would be suited for
Just, what is our office space plan, just generally, I mean?
Yeah, so we've actually started working with a consultant to help us go through a fairly comprehensive process to assess for and understand our physical use spaces in a way that ensures that we have the right sizing of space and the right use and construct of space relative to what our programmatic objectives are as an institution. And we want to conduct that work before we bring forward a lease agreement or an identification of physical office space to the board. So I anticipate with the hiring of the new CFO and with the opportunities that we'll have in the next most half of the calendar year, we'll be better positioned to move forward on the space allocation through the month with the board, get their feedback and enter into lease agreements.
Is it still our plan to have some physical space where students and, and, and teachers can connect on occasion throughout the state or is that not?
So I'd love to So that wasn't, that wasn't in our plan while I've been here. But I think the expectation of the space to support our partnership space, staff space and operational space for the college are still very much in the plan and would like to present that a little bit more formally to the board when we're at the point of readiness for that. I will say there is a whole set of physical location requirements implicated in creating space for routine student use, insurance requirements, et cetera. It's, it's quite a different thing to think about physical presence that is directly related to instructional interaction with students. And it's also a little bit of field of, of the core part of the, the Calbright model as designed and as created in the statute. So a balance between space, especially in communities where students might be able to access it on a periodic basis has to be weighed with what the requirements of physical space can be when, when it's a primary, is primarily used for, for classroom or something like that.
The only thing that I would sort of add to that is, given the more traditional model of community colleges, there's a space assessment that many of our colleges are going through because we built, we, we built these edifices for folks being in seats and the physicality of that. And even with, even with folks, our, our students coming back, the kind of space that needs to be created for them is very different now than it was before COVID. The flexibility piece of it, the asynchronously of even those who register to be on ground, they want the flexibility of when their job requires it, it can be asynchronous, which means that the space, and then, you know, what are we going to do with all this other space? And, and again, so I say that to say that understanding who this group of online students are and the need for flexibility, there needs to be some data pulled around that because paying for it and then having it utilized and then how much it's utilized and are there other options within community that may not be as costly? So all of that, what I would like to see is a very, very thorough look at what the space, what would the spaces be utilized for, how often, where are they most effective and where are they not? And then bring that, that
Analysis.
Analysis back to us.
We're, that's exactly what we're going to engage.
Okay, good, thank you. And I can't remember my other question because Tom popped so much.
Sacramento only had a, a limit of 10 questions and I think you exceeded that many fold, so. Back to LA. I just wanted to dig into some, a, a comment that was said earlier around the delay in, in hiring some adjunct faculty. I think getting faculty, adjunct faculty, full-time faculty onboard quickly has been a pressure point for the entire system. So is there anything that we could do in terms of a, a best practice to get folks in the door faster? Or is, is there anything that we could learn from that experience?
It is not a hiring practice problem. It is actually, I think, like I was mentioning, an issue associated with when programs are in position to launch and then to become a regular part of our repertoire. And some of the things that have delayed that, some was, you know, some of it was like a little bit of an intentional pause around the migration to, of the new LMS. But a, a good portion of that also had to do with the fact that program approvals were lengthy in terms of the system timeframes for approval. And similarly, that's, that's an area that's outside of control, similar area that's outside of our control. But I will say we have had some luck with has been on the accreditation side. So where we start to lose a lot of time, six months, sometimes, sometimes even longer to get program approvals through the system office at the, at the accreditor level, those were, you know, those are moving on a fairly timely basis, but can be anywhere from two to six months also.
There are a lot of moving parts there and if one part slows down, it slows down the rest of the, the queue.
To be clear, that's why the connection exists in terms of the timing of the expenditures, the need for the expenditures and the, that still continues. The need to spend that money and to focus in on the academic salaries there will continue to be an essential part of making sure the resources are available, even if there's timing delays on the launches.
And the impact, I think, on, on hiring is also that folks don't have an expectation of when they are, are coming in the door if the program approval gets delayed. So a lot of sensitivities there. Vice President Rawlings, you got a comment?
Yeah, just checking an assumption here, right? So I, I was taking a look between slide six and slide 11. With slide six, which is the point that trustee Epstein brought up about the academic salaries being about 7.6 million, being budgeted at about 1.7 being spent. If I'm going down to slide 11 and taking a look again, we've betted around 7.6 million for academic salaries. But just in quarter one, we've spent 1.6. So to me, my assumption is that I, this is what I want to check, is that it, that would indicate to me that the, the program's getting up and running, getting the adjunct hiring done has been resolved and that we're on track and, and looking at spending that 7.6 million. Is that right?
Yes, absolutely. And then also just to echo what President Menon stated earlier, one of the lessons learned between the adopted budget at 2324 and the adopted budget now is finance worked with human resources so that we could stagger the budget of the additional staff to be in alignment with the expectation. So we're not over budgeting and assuming all staff start July 1st. So that's been another lesson learned that we, we experienced last year.
All right, any other public comment or any other trustee discussion on this one? Seeing none, we'll move to public comment.
There is no public comment, President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, Terry. And with that, let's move on to item 6.2, which is in continuation of our discussion on finance, really continuing to put that, our, our Amy hats on. It's a report on the audit of financial statements, reporting on compliance and governance letter, and we'll stay with, with Amber for this one.
Thank you, and it is my pleasure to introduce our auditor. We have Stephen Curry with us today from CWDL. Stephen's joining us, I believe, there he is. I'll turn it over to Stephen. Welcome, Stephen.
Good afternoon, everybody. How's, how's everyone doing?
Well, thank you.
Awesome. Yeah, so I'm going to give kind of an overview of the audit as it relates to June 30th of 2024. As Amber mentioned, my name's Stephen Curry. I'm a senior manager with CWDL. And maybe just to start out right away, I just want to thank Amber and her team for, you know, addressing all the audit requests that we put on their plate. We, we asked a series of financial requests, compliance requests to the whole team and they did a great job on giving us what we needed to, to ultimately render the opinion on the financial statements. Is it okay if I share my screen to kind of do a walkthrough through the report and kind of how it's set up?
Sure.
Can everybody see my screen?
You can.
Alrighty, awesome. So maybe I'll just start out kind of what, what the purpose of the audit is. So we're rendering an opinion on the financial statements. The financials are derived from management system, you know, management's estimates that have been put in there and all the transactions that's happened through the year. So we're on like a test basis, we're looking at account balances, we're looking at internal controls and that's kind of how we render our opinion. So the, I'm just going to go kind of how the setup is of the report and if there's any questions on the, along the way, please feel free. So the report starts out right away on page one, which is our independent auditor's report. Essentially what this is, is this is our opinion on the financial statements taken as a whole. So essentially what we're doing is we're rendering an unmodified opinion, which is saying that we had nothing that was materially misstated or anything like that. The financials that are going to be presented later on the business type activities model are presented fairly in all material respects. Couple of sections in here, if you have a chance to read through, is just like what the responsibility of management is for the financials, what our audit, what the auditor's responsibility is, ultimately on how we got to those opinions and then a little bit about some of the schedules which we'll go over. Proceeding our independent auditor's report, the next section which begins on page four is management's discussion and analysis. This is a great high-level overview prepared by management from the financials of the previous year and current year, kind of highlighting some of the changes that you can see over the, the past two years, some of the variances where, you know, money is being spent from a very high level. So we have kind of the balance sheet overview, kind of see how the changes are there, the overall net assets decreasing as expenses are starting to go up. We have that unrestricted, that negative unrestricted net position that's primarily due to unfortunately the, the pensions, which we can talk about shortly. And then after that, we have the income statement, which is a comparative from previous year for current year. So you can kind of see where some of those expenses are, kind of where some of those increases are taking place. Some of the economic outlooks that are affecting next year's budget that was prepared by management. And that kind of wraps up the management's discussion analysis section of the audit report. After that, we would get into the basic financial statements. So this would be more detailed than what you were seeing in that MDNA. So you can see kind of the breakout of those current assets, non-current assets, liabilities, ultimately some of this big non-current liabilities, which is driving those negative unrestricted net positions. The next page would be the statement of revenues, expenses and changes in net position, better known as the income statement. So this is just showing you kind of where, where the revenues and expenses are coming in from, from both operating and non-operating and where those operating expenses are being spent. The page after that is our cash flows. So this is taking a little bit more on how did the cash actually move from the year? Sometimes you have expenses, but timing reasons, you have an, you have an AP or an under-earned revenue or an AR at the end of the year where cash really hasn't moved yet. So this is showing how did the cash actually move for those respected areas. This is just kind of reconciliation saying, hey, how do we get from our operating loss into that the net cash flows from operating activities up above on the page before. And then after this, beginning on page 12 is the notes to the financial statements. This is the bulk of the report. So this begins on page 12 and goes through page 33. Essentially what this is, is going to give you a little bit more details on not just significant accounting policies, but like a little bit more about like what the cash looks like, where's the cash at, is it cash in banks, cash in county treasury? What are the sources of AR and various items like that? It'll even go into the pensions, which we can jump forward and take a look at that. Just one thing I like to point out every year is kind of that negative unrestricted net position could be, could be negative due to the pensions as those pension costs continue to go up. Districts have to report their share of the pension. So in certain years when it was coming down during COVID, which we had some one-offs, generally it's been just on, on the incline. So just kind of scrolling through briefly, you can see note one is the summary, a little bit about the cash. Some of the capital assets right now, the big one is the technology implementation and then we have the, the leased assets for the leased software. Long-term debt, as you can see, for the district is the, kind of the other side of that subscription asset, the liability and then the compensated absences. Functional classification, this is just coming from, from the district's records where we show by operating expense. We also have a breakout here that's by function on where those, those funds are being spent. where we show by operating expense, we also have a breakout here that's by function on where those those funds are being spent. And then maybe the one thing just to point out right here is is the pension plan. So this is that what we're talking about, the net pension liability. This is essentially happening at the plan level. So our CalPERS and CalSTRS, they have these liabilities. There's a report done by an actuarial who essentially says, or using the contributions to break out against total contributions. It's a formula you pretty much times it out by the plan level, and then the district represents their share of that. So as you can kind of see, big increase this year. We're just, we're just seeing the pension plans, they're just going up. So they did go down for a one year about two years ago during the kind of the pandemic when the market was down and it's and it was recovering. It's all based off of timing. So this is one year behind. So even though we're reporting it at June 30th, 2024, the actuaries are actually doing the analysis as of June 30th, 2023. So it's always going to be a year behind. One thing I'd like to point out about this is we have these right here, these kind of showing what the discount rate would happen if there was a, you know, a change in the discount rate. So right now, the actuaries have a 7.1% discount rate that they're using. So you can see, you know, obviously, if they come up short of that, we're going to have an increase. If they do better, we're going to see a decrease in those. And that's just for the CalPERS or STIRS, and we have the CalPERS side of it right here, same thing. And that kind of takes us to the end of the notes. So the next section is the required supplementary information, which begins on page 34. So this is what I like to say, some pretty nice useful charts where you can see kind of the on the pension liability, kind of how it's changed over the years. We have right now, you know, just just a few years of information from when when the district started till now. Eventually, we're going to get that to 10 years of information. That's the requirement to reflect 10 years worth of pension liability information. The next page is just more kind of estimates, like what are the required contributions based off of what was contributed for the year, and then you kind of back into that payroll number based off of what the CalPERS and CalSTRS rates are. The section after that is the supplementary information section. So this is management-derived information that we are putting into the report. We're kind of providing limited assurance on that one. So the first one is the org chart. So this is just, you know, listing of all the the members and all the administrators as of June 30th, 2024, or in some cases, it's kind of management's discretion if we're going to do it as of the date of the audit report or June 30th. The next chart is the 50% law, which is a requirement from the chancellor's office to be in the report. So this kind of gives the breakout right from the 311 on how we get to what you have is 8.3% right now currently, which we'll we'll discuss later at the end of this report. This page I find really useful for users because as you know, the the governing board and members, you're really familiar with, you know, what's going on at the fund level. And sometimes you say, how do we get from what we're seeing as, you know, presented, you know, the fund balances to what the auditors are putting? So this is essentially saying, hey, you know, the fund balance is right here, these dollar amounts. We have all these items that we're doing as conversion entries, and that's ultimately how we go from a 58 down to a 51 on the audited financial statements. And then the last page of this is just give them a little overview of those those schedules. And then towards the end of the report, we have what is our other independent auditors' report. So we have two of them for the for the district. So the first one is our independent auditors' report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. Essentially, what this is saying is not only are we auditing the financial figures that you see on the balance sheet, but we're also looking at controls. So we're pulling a sample of, you know, warrants, payroll, cash receipts, bidding if applicable, and reviewing those to make sure that they're following the district's procedures that are in place. With that, we reported no, nothing that we saw that was significant or material weaknesses. So we issued an unmodified opinion over this. The second opinion is the independent auditors' report over state compliance. So every year, the chancellor's office releases what we call the the C-DAM, which is the Contracted District Audit Manual that's published every year. So it's a list of different state programs, which for your district, you know, really, none of this is applicable. So they essentially say, hey, look at what's applicable, what's not applicable, and here's some suggested audit procedures to look over those. And if they're out of compliance, that would obviously lead to a finding. So those are listed here on page 45 of the different requirements that were for 2324. Every year, they'll have new ones where they're either modifying them, adding or removing programs. We also issued an unmodified opinion over that. And then on page 46 is just kind of a summary of those two opinions, saying, hey, what what type of report did we issue? Was there any type of, you know, material weakness identified, significant deficiency material or the type of report issued? So maybe just to go back out, we issued an unmodified opinion. We did have one finding, but we're not modifying the opinion for that, which we'll talk about right now. So it's just going to kind of go forward. So this is the findings and recommendations section. So on page 48 is just kind of a continuation of the finding. I think at this stage of where the district's at, it's going to be very hard to meet that 50% law until obviously there's more items that are hitting on the classroom instruction side. So for fiscal year 2324, the district was not in compliance. So it's just kind of what we're saying is a repeat finding from the previous year. And then the last page would just summarize the previous year finding. And then we would say, status not implemented, see finding 2024 dash 001. So that is the financial statements. Does anybody have any questions for us on what we do or how we rendered our opinion?
Thank you, Mr. Curry. It was a very detailed 56-page report. So I appreciate the entire team's work and not only putting the report together, but gathering all the information that was necessary to get the report done. So I'm going to flip it back over to the the trustees to see if there's any discussion from from the three of you.
Nice, clean report.
It won't surprise anyone to know that I have a few questions. I didn't really understand the pension liability section. Is there a way to explain that? Like, bottom line is, are we at any risk? What what's what's the future look like?
You know, yes, so they're not, I, so it's it's all done at the state level. So when they came out with GASB 68, a lot of people, I think, were kind of taken back, essentially saying like, hey, we pay into all of this, like, that's taken on. But I I'm not sure how it got through, but essentially, they they decided to say that essentially, they want to represent every district, including K-12s, anybody that pays into those needs to have on their financials, their kind of what they would say is their estimate of the liability. We we know that the costs are increasing. We're seeing it, you know, with what you guys are having to pay, you know, on the district side for the rates that continues to go up over the years. At this point, I think it's just, it's going to continue to go up. As the market starts to go up, we I think we're going to see it maybe settle down a little bit. But as of right now, there's not really a whole lot I would say the districts could do. It's just a compliance requirement that has to be reported.
And Stephen, maybe you qualify because I think the way Amy would explain this, kind of like Amy is, you know, we're all in a big pool together in terms of the public sector. And so while dollar amounts might look high for any given one entity, the percentage of overall risk relative to the full giant portfolio that exists is relatively small. Is that a fair estimation of how to characterize the pension liability issue?
Yes, yes. And then I could even give you, do you want numbers? Just, I think this is always helpful to hear, like, what is the state level and how did it change from last year to this year? That's probably a good one that a lot of my clients like to see. So I'm just pulling up kind of some pension notes that I have. So just just for your reference, so for, and this is always a year behind. So the liability for June 30th of 2022 for STIRS was $69.5 billion. So then the district should have their share. And then for June 30th of 2023, went from 69.5 to 76 point, almost 76.2 billion dollars. So you can see that, yes, at the state level, it's it's going up, and that's why you're continuing to see your liability go up. And then on the PERS side, a little bit more favorable for the past two years. On June 30, 2022, it was 34.4 billion, and right now it's 36.2 billion. It's just, it's one of those things, if you ever wanted to sit down, I could show you kind of the the ins and outs. There's the pension liability is just one side of it. Then there's these deferred inflows, these deferred outflows that essentially, they have changes in their estimates, changes in the experience gains and losses that they don't like report as an expense that year. They they smooth them out over a five-year period or or seven-year period, depending on the categories.
Staying at a very high level, what if they don't hit 7.1%? What if it's 6%? So what does that mean to Calbright?
That would mean your liability is going to go up. So for instance, on that page, let me share my screen again for you. So I think the perfect example is is right here. This on this discount rate. So they're using a 6.9% discount rate. If they missed it by 1%, as of today, if you were just using today's liability, you would be going from 14.9 to 21.6. And if they did better, you can see kind of the opposite swing. 14.9 to 9.4.
So my question, I guess, if me being a pessimist about the future of the economy under the new administration, if if the return is much is lower, what what should Calbright be doing? Or is there anything we can do?
So there are options. You know, some districts open what's called like FUPARs, it's called a Pension Stabilization Trust, where you could put money in there and earn a decent return. And it doesn't offset your liability. It's just an investment account that essentially you could put funds in there to kind of help earn interest for the times when things are getting harder and you don't have as much cash flow, you can pull from there to continue to pay those employer contributions. So there's those options that are available to the district.
Is that something that districts generally do, or is it pretty rare?
So it's not as common, it's becoming more common. Districts do it for the OPEB, so districts that have OPEB liabilities, they more do it because it's actually for the OPEB, if if I open up an irrevocable trust in my OPEB liability is 10 million, and I have $5 million in there, I only have to represent on my books $5 million, where the pensions, they don't allow you to do that. But the nice part about the pension one is I still think at the end of the day, you put the money aside and you can use it to offset those costs when they do go up. At least you have somewhere to pull from there. It's still going to be a government fund, it's going to be represented in your financial statements under kind of the regular governmental funds. It's not going to be a fiduciary fund like you would see with OPEB. But it's there and it's available, and they they have some pretty decent returns on those. But typically, districts that I see it are a little bit more of the the larger districts that are currently, you know, what I would say closer to like a basic aid districts where they don't receive a whole lot of funding, they have a lot of extra cash around, so they're taking that cash and putting it in there to help offset those future ones. But there are many districts now that are starting to open those up because they're realizing these costs are going up. So even if, you know, they're putting a couple hundred thousand dollars in there, it's going to grow, it's going to help.
What's OPEB?
OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits. Which you don't, you don't offer, but a lot of districts have historical OPEBs where essentially employees have these lifelong benefits when they retire. So there's a liability that's associated with them that has to be represented on on the books.
Any other discussion points from the trustees? Hearing none, any public comment?
There was no public comment, President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, Terry, and thank you very much, Amber, and to Stephen for, again, their work on this particular item. We are moving to item 6.3 on Information and Reports: Integrating Project-Based Learning Experiences Agreement with RipeN, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. McCarty.
Thank you very much, President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawling. I'm excited to present the next phase of work-based learning at Calbright. Next slide, please. So in today's agenda, just really the goal of this presentation is to highlight the importance of work-based learning opportunities, share the cross-functional work that has that we've completed, and then some next next steps that we are taking. Next slide, please. I'm going to start with a little bit of the why and some of the research, and I don't think this would be surprising or shocking to anybody. But really, truly, there's a lot of value coming from work-based internships, where they provide on-the-job real-world learning experiences for students, which are really crucial for aspects of landing a job. Employers want to hire those that have work experience. However, access to these opportunities are not evenly distributed. And so, and specifically for Calbright colleges, who really represent the under-representation in internships, it really heightens the importance of creating these work-based opportunities for a student. Next slide, please. So this is some research that was conducted by the Serrano Education Foundation. They did a 2022 survey, and it actually is results from over 1,100 California adults aged 18 to 65, which I found fascinating because I really appreciate that that's it's very close to home. But some of the things that you might notice on the upper slide, excuse me, is that women or females have a far less opportunity to engage in paid internship than their male counterparts. And very similarly, white and Asian students have a much higher rate of participation in paid internships than any other race or ethnicity. Next slide, please. And similarly, when we look at individuals of first-generation students, it is significantly less than those that have some continuing generation experience when participating in paid internships. And similarly, this is similar to ages. So students aged 29 and younger have more opportunity to participate than students aged 30 and over. And so really just wanted to provide this information to highlight the importance in some ways, the misalignment of paid internships, access and opportunities. And I really think that speaks to our student population specifically. So over the last four months, Calbright has been conducting a cross-functional, human-centered design process or engaging in a cross-functional, human-centered design process. And we really wanted to begin defining what experience and learning looks like at Calbright. Next slide, please. And we started with experiential learning terminology, just to create the larger umbrella, because we really didn't want to limit ourselves to just work-based learning or other kind of predefined terms. And we really wanted to go through the human-centered design process, have our students tell us what it looks like and means for them. And we also did this with a cross-functional theme, so learning instruction, student support services, our work board, strategy and innovation team, and economic development, all participated. So during the month of October and November, we were able to conduct seven focus groups, talk to 32 students from across varying programs, varying education backgrounds and different demographics. And then we also sent out a survey where we ended up receiving 266 respondents. And all the goal was really to understand our students, understand their desires related to experiential learning, and understand how we can expand those opportunities at Calbright. Next slide, please. There it goes. It was a lot to load. I know these letters are really, I know the words are really small, but I know you have them also printed out. So I'll highlight a few of the items that we did learn. And one of the key things that I enjoyed seeing from these new personas is really that students really want to be able to have more applied learning, they want to build build portfolios, and to them, it's also gaining confidence. So in this example, this is Jenna. She is a 28-year-old data entry clerk. She's really motivated by enhancing her career prospects and increasing earning potential. And so she's seeking to create a portfolio of projects that demonstrate her technical skills to potential employers. But she has some apprehension, which is applying for job opportunities if she's not fully mastered the skill and appears underqualified. So if you read, I'll read her quote for you, and that's kind of small on the slide. "I've always found that I learned best by diving in and getting my hands dirty. Theory is important, it really clicks for me when I can apply concepts to an actual project. Give me a real-world challenge where I can use these skills, see how different pieces fit together, and produce something tangible. That's when everything truly comes alive and sticks in my mind. It's not just about memorizing information, but about how, understanding how we use it effectively in practice." Next slide, please. Another student, this is Derek, he is a 37-year-old business analyst, and he's really preparing to shift his career in response to the changing job market. He is eager to connect his previous work experience to a new field, but apprehensive about proving his value to potential employers. So his challenge is the catch-22, needing experience to get his job or a new job, but needing a job to gain relevant work experience. And in his quote, Derek said, "When considering any educational or training opportunity, my top priority is ensuring it will equip me with the specific skills and knowledge that employers in my target field are actively seeking. I'm at a stage in my career when I must invest my time and energy strategically. I want to ensure that every course I take, every project I complete, and every skill I develop aligns with what hiring managers seek in candidates. It's crucial that the program has a clear connection to real-world job requirements and market demands." And I really love that quote because I think it speaks to adult learners. I think it speaks specifically to our students, but also really truly proud to say that it informs a lot about how we develop our programs, how we think about creating assessment opportunities that allow students to demonstrate these real-world skills, and that we're ensuring that we maintain relevancy in our programs, that students are getting those market need or market demand skills. So next slide, please. So we've taken this feedback and the insights from student personas, and we're really working towards creating work-based learning opportunities at Calbright. And this work is in collaboration with our workforce strategy and innovation team, as well as economic development. And so in, oops, next slide. All right, and hopefully this slide looks a little familiar. When I, when we presented this slide previously, we really kind of showed you the larger ecosystem, but wanting to draw out this experiential learning component as well. So knowing that as we are actualizing on the ecosystem, we're pulling this thread through, making sure that we're creating this experiential learning for students. So in, next slide, Terry, thank you. So in 2025, we're calling it the Next Gen Work Integrated Learning Program, and we're partnering with RipeN. And RipeN is a, I would say, a national, well, actually more than national, an international job market employer. And they really focus on bridging education and employment opportunities. So they have created a marketplace that engages over 40,000 employers. They have over 200,000 learner projects, which really equates to about millions of applied learning opportunities for students. So specifically for Calbright, we're going to pilot this project, and we'll be working with California-specific employers, who will give us access to approximately 6,000 employer projects. So in March, Calbright will be offering 75 paid micro-internship opportunities across three programs, specifically cyber security, project management, and our newly launching HR learning development programs. So after students complete the program, they'll have an opportunity to have a paid micro-internship. So it's about a 40-hour work experience, and they'll receive a small stipend for their efforts. And so we're hoping that this proof of concept will allow us to do these things, which is enhance employability, help our underserved student population, and then really encourage collaboration between our, between the college employers and students through these projects. Next slide, please.
There's a delay.
I know, there's a lot of words. I feel like the slide wants you to pause, get all the words down. Through this process with RipeN, what we really are hoping to learn, oh, whoops, and it seems like it skipped a slide, Terry. Can you go back one? There we go. And the reason we're partnering with RipeN is because they have had a lot of success. And in their annual impact report, they really talked about the very success they've had with other institutions. And specifically in, in Canada, they've had a lot of growth. But they've been able to see that, like, two in five students who complete these projects are offered a job immediately. 64% of the students participating are often hired directly by the project's employer. And really love seeing the kind of bottom percentage of 90% of learners report gaining valuable workplace skills, but also some of the durable skills that you see listed. 85% of the learners indicate that RipeN projects help them better understand the career pathway. And the last one I really want to draw out is that employers who work with RipeN are more likely to offer additional work-based learning opportunities. And as we kind of think about Calbright's role in creating that two-sided match between employer opportunities and what we are preparing students for, I think we'll be able to gain a lot of insights from what employers are looking for, how our students are representing themselves in these, in these kind of work-based opportunities, and ensuring that they have that readiness so they can be successful in these projects. And so looking forward to what we learn through the process. Well, for the next slide. All right, so how we're going to be evaluating the success of this project is really making sure that we're looking at this, doing a skills assessment, sorry.
Slide that we...
Oh, I did skip one, yeah, sorry. I guess you guys had that. I skipped it actually in the slide as well. What you're seeing, I think, in the paper slide and slide was really just what that looks like from a program integration process. And how we are, there's a marketplace, so we can pick the projects related to the specific programs. And then from there, we match students with those projects. Students don't have to go and apply for them, we're actually doing the match directly with employer themselves. Sorry, I wasn't sure of the time I would have, so I skipped. And so the very last part is really what we're hoping to learn. We'll be doing a pre- and post-skills assessment with the micro-internships. And again, that will help inform to make sure that program and the learning opportunities within that program are setting up students for success. And we'll build a track for your outcomes and job placement, doing some targeted outreach with those learners, as well as surveys throughout the process and then post-micro-internship completion, completion. And then also the learner-employer satisfaction surveys. So these are some high goals, but kind of looking at what RipeN has been able to do with other institutions, we're hopeful that, hopeful that we can replicate those results. Where 90% of the learners report increased for clearly an ability to recruit, having more growth of the professional network. And then also 90% report improved communication, time management, critical thinking, professionalism, skills, et cetera. So those really like durable skills. So not only the technical, but looking to ensure that they're awesome, achieving their durable skills and readiness. So that's kind of highlighting where we are in next steps, but happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. McCarty. Any trustee discussion?
Congratulations. To our students, no, really, this was the missing, this was the missing piece. And as arduous as it is to get through several of the processes, this is going to be so helpful for students who get the certificate but need that, this, this connector, so, well done.
I will say, I'm, I'm similarly particularly excited about this because the whole model of what we do is based on students being empowered to show what they can do.
Yep.
And this is very much a really tangible way that can be built into the resume as they're applying for jobs. That is a critical way for them to communicate to employers with this. And it, it is a little bit of the, of the gap that our students experience in our attempts to close it.
Dr. McCarty, a few questions free from me. Questions and a comment. The comment is, this really sounds like a pilot program at scale. So it seems like we're hitting a resource that really provides a broad level of experience to a lot of our students. So this is, the model of this is just so intriguing to me. As is the part that you mentioned about students experiencing that they have good development and growth in the durable skills section. Can you talk a little bit about how that particular skill is developed in a virtual versus an in-person program? Are these offered in both of those modalities? Or is this an, an in-person internship or micro-internship?
Yeah, no, fantastic question. These are actually going to be all virtual, just to ensure that we are aligning with our student needs, because we don't want them to have to travel if they're in a rural, remote area, and we didn't want to have any limitations to these opportunities. So they will be engaging directly with the employer. So as they are working on these projects, they would get immediate employer feedback. And then they would be able to like iterate and ensure that they are aligning with the employer needs and what they're asking for in that project. So through that process and through that communication, that will help build some of those durable skills. In some instances, these projects can be collaborative. So there could be more kind of a team-based project where they are working with, it could be another Calbright student, or it could be another student outside of Calbright, that is also like paired and partnered on these projects. And so that'll be the opportunity for those students to convey those durable skills that they've gained. And then even within our program, we are integrating durable skill opportunities. So kind of creating some scenario-based learning. And I think I've shared those previously, what they look like. So they'll have an opportunity to kind of gain those, the program, and then really again apply those when they get to those work-based engagements.
Thank you. I'm a little bit disappointed that you didn't say in-person because I'm always looking for a place for us to conduct a site visit or do a...
I can look for an in-person just for you.
That's what has seemed like the perfect setting for us to go in there and really see how, how things are really working well on the ground level. But it's, it's virtual, so maybe we'll just have to set up a Zoom meeting. My other question is, could you talk about the micro-internship that's so short-term, it's only two weeks long? What kind of things can you accomplish in two weeks? It takes me two, two weeks to read the board material, so two weeks is really, really short.
Yeah, and I, well, they could be anywhere from two weeks up to like six weeks. So the employer and the student will kind of identify that timeline, but we're aiming for about a 40-hour project. And so for some students, if they're able to dedicate five hours, then we can extend up to eight weeks. We didn't want to create any opportunities or barriers that would limit this to any of our students. So depending on the student's schedule, they'd be able to modify that and work directly with the employer. So the goal is the 40 hours. We also didn't want them to be too extensive that they weren't able to complete the project. So that's kind of like the, the target goal that we're going to try with the pilot, to see if the 40 hours is the ideal timeline.
Thank you very much. Any other trustee comment on this one, Vice President Rawlings?
I would just share that this is something I find really exciting. I've worked in programs that do basic skills and all this before, and know the value of experiential learning, particularly the Workforce Pathways Joint Advisory Committee that several of our members serve on, sees the data from the California Department of Ed on how impactful experiential learning is on our CTE students in the K-12, and seeing increased engagement rates, lower absenteeism rates from, from students in K-12. But overall, much higher outcomes for students who engage in experiential learning. And this being work-based is especially great. So looking forward to seeing a lot of success from our students through this program.
Thank you so much, and thank you for sharing your experience. It's great to...
Thank you very much. Any public comment on this one?
There was no public comment, President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, Terry, and thank you again, Dr. McCarty, for that excellent presentation. We're going to pop back over to our Controller, Executive Director of Finance, Amber Borth, for our reports on contract and purchases, item 6.4.
Good afternoon. I'm excited to be here today to present to you our action item or information report for 6.4. This is information regarding our contracts and purchases. As per Board Policy 616330, we're required that the Board of Trustees be informed of all contracts and purchases made by the college. Today, we present to you a listing of all contracts and purchases for the month of October and November.
Thank you very much. Any trustee questions? Hearing none, any public comment?
There was no public comment, President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much. We are headed, we're almost done, guys. Constituency group reports, we have item 7.1 from the Calbright Academic Senate, and we welcome Michael Stewart.
Good afternoon, President Aguinaldo and Vice President Rawlings, Board members and colleagues. I am Michael Stewart, the President of Calbright College's Academic Senate. And as the year end, as the year ends, rather than discussing enrollment numbers, which were mentioned in the first quarter budget update, we would wish to highlight the innovative learning tools that we will be using for instruction in the year 2025. I'm excited to announce that the Learning and Instruction Department has launched Canvas as our new learning management system. This is where everyone can clap. This platform significantly enhances student educational experience with advantages like real-time discussions, multimedia integration, and instant feedback to boost engagement. Our instructors can easily update and adapt course materials based on student input. And Canvas gives user-friendly design and mobile access to provide an exceptional experience for our students, faculty, while fostering connectivity anytime and anywhere. Our programs such as Security Plus, Data Analysis, and IT Support are already operational, and students are using Canvas today. Soon, additional courses like Network Technologies, Medical Coding, and HR Development will launch, helping students with the cutting-edge and highly-modified LMS. The Academic Senate extends gratitude to Shannon McCarty, our VP of Learning and Instruction, and all involved in this initiative. Your teamwork has been invaluable. This new LMS marks a significant step in enhancing student success, and we look forward to its impact on our academic community. Thank you for being a supportive, I thank you for being so supportive as we start this new and exciting chapter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael, and wonderful news. Thank you, especially for your report. We have a no-report from the Calbright Faculty Association, no-report from TSCA, and no-report from the Associate and Students of Calbright College. So we are headed right to 8.1 Public Forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
Aguinaldo, I see no questions.
Terry. All right, everyone, it is 1:08 PM Pacific Time. The business of the Board of Trustees is now complete, and we can adjourn. Thank you for your participation.